All right, good evening. I'd like to call the March 11th Committee of the Whole Meeting Order. Mrs. Boak, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Pelley Vanoglu.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Eight members present.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have the minutes for the February 26, 2024 meeting. Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move that the meeting minutes from February 26, 2024 be approved as written.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
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 All those who oppose, same sign. All right, motion passes. All right, well, we are moving down to public comment on agenda items. So if there's anyone in the public that would like to come down to the well, now's your time. Please state your name for the record, and you will have up to three minutes.
And I would, I'm Loretta Stanaway. I would like to talk tonight about the options for selling City Hall, moving to the Masonic Temple, buying that property, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I am not in favor of selling City Hall. I am not in favor of buying the Masonic Temple. We own the City Hall. It is bought, paid for, and it is worth more as a vacant piece of land than the developer would offer us for buying the property. Instead, I propose, as I've proposed before, that we take the space here, combine in the departments that are outside of the premises here, so that all the departments are in one building, just like the mayor's suggesting they be at the Masonic Temple, and that the excess floors here be used to create penthouse apartments, which would then create a revenue stream for the city. And they would occupy the space above. They would also utilize the space that is going to be vacated by the police facility. They could have an entrance lobby dedicated to them with the elevator dedicated to them with concierge services. The other floors could be utilized for things like a convenience combination, coffee shop, combination bookstore, newspaper shop. One floor could be used as event space to rent. One floor could be used for conference rooms and dedicated office facilities. One could be a library game room. One could be storage lockers to increase space for the tenants in the penthouses. But I think that we need to look at the fact that we own this. It's worth more. It is the prime piece, the prime piece of real estate in the city. There is no more valuable spot in this entire city than this location. And we need to think about other options besides vacating and moving, paying somebody for another facility, which is older than this facility, and maybe it's in better shape, but it is still older. And that is a hard sell to me, to think that you want to vacate a building because it's obsolete, but you're going to move into a building that's older. There is space down below for dedicated parking for the penthouse occupants, and I think that that is how we should proceed. Thank
Mr. President, Mayor, council members, I don't speak in public anymore. So I'm submitting to you my written comments and summarize it by saying, this is the right project with the right team, with the right timing, and you should go for it. I've been here 50 years. We've had some great things happen, but there's more to be done. And you're key partners in that process, and I urge you to support the project. I'd answer any questions, but I'm not prepared to speak. I have the comments in writing to you.
Good evening. My name is Dustin Howard. I am a business agent for the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, Local 333. I'd like to state for the record that Local 333 fully supports the Genalosi and Boji developments. Both are transformational developments for the downtown area. It will put many building trade members to work. The Genaloses have committed to a labor, a project labor agreement, and Local 333 is confident with the terms that agreement will be negotiated in a timely manner. We hope that you will support both developments moving forward as much as we do. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon. Tim Damon, 500 East Michigan Avenue, Lansing, Council President Garza, and the rest of the City Council members. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. On behalf of the Lansing Regional Chamber, I'm here to express our continued support for the projects that are on the agenda this evening. We certainly believe these will be catalysts for not only more in future development, not only downtown, but throughout the city, and we firmly believe throughout the region as well. Earlier today, we submitted a letter to City Council signed by 68 businesses that call the city of Lansing home, along with a letter from eight regional economic development partners, all in support of these developments. Additionally, polling conducted last week showed that 70% of Lansing residents, Lansing voters, support the City Council's approval of these projects, affirming the community's desire for positive change and strategic investment in our city's future. So we certainly appreciate the leadership and the diligence, not only from this governing body, but from Mayor Shore as well, as you vetted and went through the each of these projects and through all your processes. We certainly thank you for that leadership, and we hope that you join us this evening in supporting future development in the city of Lansing. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dale Schrader. I'm a Lansing resident and president of Walnut Neighborhood, former, former president of Preservation Lansing, and current chair of Friends of Morse Park Pool Commission. I'm here today to speak about the proposal for the Masonic Temple building development. I, I support it. I speak on behalf of preservationists, not all preservationists, but many that I have spoken to are very excited about restoring this Masonic Temple building and then giving, possibly being able to repurpose this building and have it become a hotel. I think it would be a great thing for, for downtown Lansing. And I'll just read this part. With, with the infusion of funds and attention, we can ensure that the Masonic building not only stands the test of time, but be, can become a vibrant centerpiece in our city's evolving narrative. So being a preservation isn't always an easy thing. You win a few, you lose a lot. I, I think this one would be a great, it's a great building, and I, I hope you vote to approve this. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
I'm Norma Bauer, and I'm here to provide a citizen's perspective on the proposed project that Dustin Howard was talking about. And I listened to the presentation from the planner and developer, and it seemed to me that it was a wicked problem. So many variables, you don't know how to manage any of them. There's no real answer. But I heard him present a whole bunch of if this and if that, and in my opinion, and it all sounded like a house of cards to me. And I don't believe in building a house of cards any more than you all do. At the same time, citizens would be up in arms if you voted down the key part of funding for this project. So you're more or less trapped into voting for it tonight. And I understand that. But if they can build a house of cards, so can I. And my house of cards goes like this. I wonder why there's so many openings on boards and commissions, even though people have applied for it. Maybe this mayor has a secret dream of getting freed from all of his ominous duties that he needs for deputy mayors. And maybe the city attorney would really like to not have to go along with a strong mayor because it goes against his Catholic principles. And so maybe the Lansing Charter Review Commission will actually vote for a city manager and let our current mayor be elected into a honorary mayor who does all the things he does really well, like presiding over the senior fair and parades and fireworks and public relations things about how great Lansing is doing and celebrating. You got a problem? Go talk to the city manager. Not my job anymore. How nice for him. So maybe it'll happen and maybe it won't. Maybe it'll happen some other way. I'm not on the Lansing Charter Review Commission, and I don't expect to be because I don't have the qualifications. I've got a brain injury, and I recognize that. So I'm paying close attention because I know when I walk into a voting booth, I know exactly who I'm voting for and why. And I want to approach the vote for the Lansing Charter Commission in the same way. And I want to find a bunch of people who want what I, my house of cards is built on, and let God decide. So have a good evening, folks.
Is there any additional public comment?
Good afternoon, everyone. It's wonderful to see all of you. For those of you who don't know, and that probably means I haven't upset any of you, if you don't know, I'm the superintendent of the Lansing School District. I'm Ben Shuldner, and I'm here to speak because I know that we have been talked of as one of the possible tenants in the new City Hall. And I just want to make sure to be very clear about where the district stands and why we think it is possibly a really good idea. If you've ever been to the central offices, they're in Kalamazoo Street Elementary School, which is 101 years old this year. It is run out of steam heat and is really, really expensive to run. It costs us quite a bit of money, and it's not really environmentally friendly. I like the building. I love being in something that looks like an elementary school. But, you know, if we're going to be thoughtful about using our money wisely, which of course all of our money should be going to our children, one of the ideas would be to possibly rent the top floors of the new City Hall. So if that works out, and again, you know, you got to see numbers, right? I'm never going to agree to anything, and certainly my board's not going to agree to anything unless it makes sense. But on its face, it makes quite a lot of sense. There's a lot of economies of scale that come with sharing facilities. For instance, a room like this. We could use it for a school board meeting. You can use it for city council. Why have two rooms that can serve the same purpose as one? There's also a lot of really wonderful things and synergies that can happen with community members. Imagine you're trying to enroll a child, and you don't have a certain document that you need from the city. Well, if the City Hall and the school district are in the same building, that's actually quite cool and quite wonderful. And so, you know, I think there's a lot of ideas of bringing the city, the city's system itself and the school district together that will help kids, will help family members, and help the community. But again, I know that it's been in the paper, and it's been batted around that the school district is interested. Absolutely. We are absolutely interested. But I'll always say first and foremost, my first responsibility is to the children and the staff and the families of Lansing. And of course, if it makes sense to move into a nicer, newer, better, more efficient building at less square footage, well, of course, we would do that. That sounds like a great idea. But if it doesn't work that way, then, you know, I'm happy to be in Kalamazoo Street Elementary School with my fake fireplace and really bad heat. So, you know, look, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know not, that doesn't happen here, but I know that this is important for the City Council. I have great respect for the City Council and all of you, of course. But I just want to make sure that you know where the school district stands, which is it makes a lot of sense on paper to have that synergy, to be able to work together and have both entities together. And then, of course, if it's a savings to the school district, all the better. So thank you so much. Three seconds to spare.
I'm going to make sense of all of what you guys have seen. That's the charade that we go through every time the mayor brings something. You all, it's what we talked about prior. Couple weeks ago, you all said you wanted some information. You wanted information on all these things. Did you get it, is the question I have. Or are we just getting ramrodded again with this info? Who cares what building it's in for everything that the superintendent just said? Everything he just said could happen right here. So my biggest concern from this council is you all are supposed to protect us from outside developers who undoubtedly, when they get in a room with the mayor, are the smartest people in the room. He can't protect you from them. That's the problem. It can be the most brilliant idea to him, but we've seen how that goes with the retirement healthcare. He thought that was a brilliant idea because somebody told him it was. So the only thing that people are asking of you as a community is to do your due diligence. This is the second time we've been ramrodded. So I'm hoping that during this process of conversation today that you tell us what you found out about revitalizing this building. The renovation's here. You found out some guarantees with the Genalosi situation, and we're going to get those three buildings and not just one. Those are the things that we're concerned about. Blueprints, plans, we already see what $175 million to this jail and everything else that was down on the south end of town. We have no line item, anything. We don't have anything to show. I mean, I, we don't even, like, just a model that you could eventually sell to a train enthusiast to show us what this thing is going to look like. None of us have seen any of that. But you guys are pouring out millions and millions of dollars for it without even seeing just that, just that. We got a $5,000 grant from the city of Lansing for gun violence prevention. And they want a Bible of response of how we spent that money from us, little grassroots, trying to save the world. $5,000. Might as well give them an unborn child. But they can come down here for $175 million of village and show you nothing, and then sit in front of you guys and put something up on the screen that doesn't tell you anything either. Carol Wood almost had an aneurysm up there trying to figure out why he would come here with nothing to show me, over $175 million. And then they got uppity and had an attitude because guess what? It's already passed. What are you going to do now? And that's the problem. The charter beholds us. There's nothing you can do after this meeting. You pass that stuff without getting that information you asked for, it's over. So they brought the big guns. You got all of everybody out here. I could tell you right now, ask them to raise their hand if they live in the city of Lansing. You're going to get four or five hands. They don't care about none of that. The budget, the finances, they just want the money in here. Because of course, it's good for the plumbers and pipe fitters. If they built a hell that was made of concrete and needed piping, it'd be good for the plumbers and pipe fitters. It doesn't matter. All we're asking is to do your due diligence. Ryan, Adam, you asked for information. If you didn't get it, you can't pass it. Just get the information to make sure this is truly what it is and that it's right for us. That's all we ask. That's your job as the council. Protect us from the outside entities that would choose to harm.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment in the room? Seeing no other public comment. Today was the first day we opened it up for virtual public comment. We didn't have anybody sign up, so we'll move on with the agenda. So we are at discussion action item B, resolution to set a public hearing for community development block grant, CDBG, annual action plan for fiscal year 2024, 2025. I see Mr. Raleigh Van Fossen, Barb Kimmel on our way down. Appreciate you guys being here this evening. So I'll, I'll let you go over the CDBG annual plan when you guys are ready, but please make sure your green light's on, and then we'll open up for questions.
Good evening. Can you hear us okay? Perfect. For those who don't know, which I think most all of you do, I'm Raleigh Van Fossen, Director of Economic Development and Planning. And with me today is Barb Kimmel, our Development Manager. And so for those who have been on council before, you're used to this time of year in which the city of Lansing has to discuss as a community its annual action plan. And so we are an entitlement community that does receive a direct award from the Department of Housing and Urban Development annually. It's a formula base largely. We receive our own direct allocation because of our population size. The only other jurisdiction in Ingham County that receives a direct allocation would be the city of East Lansing. Otherwise, the state receives their own direct allocation. And all of these dollars from HUD, HUD asks the community to go through an annual action planning so that the community can inform HUD how they want to spend those dollars in the following year. So today is, one, you're setting the public hearing. We do have a consultant on contract who will be here for the public hearing. We've taken this through the Planning Commission last week and passed out unanimously. But we're here to kind of talk to broadly about some of the funding strategies that we've heard back from the community and how hopefully those dollars will be spent in the coming year. So I'll pass the mic over to Ms. Kimmel, who will go over some of that. We'll see if you have any questions.
Good evening. So the city last completed its five-year consolidated plan in 2022, and as Raleigh stated, every year we have to submit an annual action plan. And so we're, we are currently in the process of developing the AAP, and we are following our citizens' participation plan. We did hold a public hearing at the Planning Commission on March 5, and we are asking that you set a public hearing plan for April 15 at the City Council meeting. We also have a 30-day comment period, which begins on March 14 and ends on April 15. Also, a draft of the annual action plan will be available beginning on March 14 in the Development Office at 316 North Capitol Avenue, Suite D1. It will also be available on the Development Office's website, and it will also be available in the City Clerk's office. So we're going to talk about our allocations and what we plan to do. I want to note that our allocations at this time, our estimated allocations, we have not received our final allocations from HUD yet for the HUD PY24. They will change. And when we receive our allocations, we'll adjust our budget categories proportionally. The action plan will be updated, and if by chance we do not receive our allocations by April 15, we will still hold the public hearing on April 15. However, we would not request that the council approve the action plan until we have those final allocations. So there are five major areas of focus in the consolidated plan. Those areas are housing, homelessness, non-housing, community development, and non-homeless special needs. The AAP addresses these priorities. Our first goal is affordable housing. We want to maintain availability, quality, and accessibility to persons of low and moderate income, protected classes as identified in the Fair Housing Act, and special needs populations throughout the city. Goal two is homelessness, to prevent and reduce homelessness within the city of Lansing. Goal three is the provision of public services and other needed services, support and capacity building for public services targeting low and moderate income and special needs populations within Lansing, including but not limited to senior programs, youth services, and mental health services. Goal number four is public facilities and infrastructure improvements to enhance the living environment of low and moderate income homeless and special needs populations through public improvement projects and activities. And goal five is public administration. That is the planning and administration for utilizing CDBG home and ESG program dollars. And some budget categories that we're going to talk about are restricted. For instance, the administration funding for CDBG is limited to 20% of our funding allocation. The administration for the home dollars is limited to 10% of the allocation, and ESG administration is limited to 7.5%. CDBG public services is capped at 15% of our allocation. Additionally, there are required, we are required to set aside at least 15% of our home allocation for community housing development organizations, also known as CHODOs. And we can choose to set aside up to 5% of our home allocation for CHODO operating. And we do choose to set aside the full 5%. So I'll refer you to the summary of the action plan that you guys have in your packet, and we can do a walkthrough quickly, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you have. So our estimated funding amount does include estimated funds from previous years as well as estimated program income. We're required to include those amounts. So we plan on spending one point, about $1.4 million on homeowner housing rehabilitation, and those can include rehab and emergency repair of owner-occupied housing units, rehabilitation in conjunction with affordable housing efforts sponsored by nonprofit housing corporations, public or private developers, other state and federal agencies, as well as lead hazard reduction, emergency housing rehab, technical assistance to nonprofit housing corporations, ADA ramps, hazard remediation. We also are proposing just over $480,000 for rental unit rehabilitation. This includes loans and grants for the rehabilitation of rental housing units through the city-sponsored programs, and includes funds to meet healthy housing standards and/or lead hazard reduction regulations in rehabilitated structures. We do have $1,000 set aside for blight removal, and that is really, at this point, just a placeholder. We're, we're not planning to utilize any of these funds for blight removal this year. We do have FEMA grants that we will utilize to purchase and demolish homes in the floodplain. But typically, when we do blight removal, we do it in partnership with the Ingham County Land Bank, and they have their blight elimination grant dollars available to them this year. We do plan to set aside the 310,000, or excuse me, yeah, $310,589,000 for public services. Once again, that is capped at that amount. And we plan to set aside $30,000 for economic development and business technical assistance. Just over $414,000 as CDBG general administration. Once again, that is our cap amount. $1,000 for home down payment assistance for, to assist low and moderate homeowner, lower moderate income homeowners to purchase properties by offering down payment assistance and closing costs based on the need. And we also will be setting aside just over $500,000 for homeowner housing and construction rehabilitation of home funds, and that includes funds for loans and grants to, for housing construction and rehabilitation with nonprofit and for-profit developers, including CHODOs. We do set aside 15% for CHODOs. That amount is $125,009, and that is reserved for housing developed, sponsored, or owned by CHODOs, and developed in partnership with the city. And then we do set aside the 5% CHODO operating, which is just over $41,000. And that allows CHODOs to utilize some of our funding to help with administrative costs. Home general administration, just over $83,000. And then we have our ESG funding, street outreach activities funded by ESG in the amount of $5,448, homeless prevention activities in the amount of $59,926, homeless management information system, $5,448. That's for the HMIS system, and shelter operation in the amount of $98,060. And then finally, the ESG general administration dollars, $12,711, and that is a capped amount. So our public process includes what we're, what we're doing here tonight, and we're here to answer any questions.
All right. Well, thank you for being here. Appreciate the presentation. Our internal auditor, Emily, do you have anything?
Barb answered all my questions ahead of time, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other? Okay, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions on the public process. I see in the overview it says that the program requires a detailed plan which emphasizes community engagement. That's good. That's great. Did I hear that there was a community meeting on the 5th, was it?
It was a Planning Commission meeting. So this, part of this process also requires us to take what we're talking to you about, also through the Planning Commission. So on March 5, they held a public hearing, as well on what you're, what we're talking to you tonight about.
And how did that go?
It passed out of the Planning Commission unanimously.
Was there any public comment?
There was indeed public comment, absolutely.
Approximately, how many people?
Three people.
In person, yeah. There was some written received comment as well.
I appreciate that. And then also, you men- And then also, you mentioned that today's a day, and another public hearing in our council is in April, I believe. But didn't you say there's a draft available coming up?
Yes.
This week or next?
This week. There will be a draft available of the annual action plan, and that will be available on our website, and also in our office, and also in the City Clerk's office. We're also having a 30-day public comment period that starts this Wednesday.
Thank you. I guess I was just wondering, so how is there a draft already done? If it emphasizes community engagement, and it sounds like most of the opportunity is coming up, because there's a few opportunities, and I know it might come over from year to year, so I just appreciate the community engagement part. And if it, because it's so important, there's so much money here, and it's so general that it can be used in a lot of different ways, and a lot of these are very important. Just want to see that the community stays engaged, too.
Absolutely. And I'll clarify that the community input we're looking for is on the draft annual action plan. So, we have to put out the draft for the community to comment. The annual action plan is derived from the 2022 consolidated plan that the community would have discussed, this body, et cetera, would have implemented. Certainly, we always welcome that type of feedback, but when that draft goes public, that is what we're asking the community for the next 30 or so days, and to come before council, should they choose in April to comment publicly on.
I appreciate that. Thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely.
Do we have any other questions or comments from council? Councilman Spatter.
Thank you. I had a quick question. I don't remember this in the past, but maybe I'm just misremembering. Why a placeholder for blight removal if we don't use that, these dollars for that?
Well, we, we do have a FEMA grant, and we are going to be acquiring and demolishing homes with that FEMA grant. It is possible that we may need to supplement those funds with CDBG. So, we do have it in our budget.
Oh, okay. And then if the federal government comes back with more funds, you can move those around with amendments? Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? All right, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Garza. Thank you all so much for being here, and Barb, always good to see you, as well as Mr. Riley. I had the privilege of sitting with you and you explaining some of this a little bit more in detail, and I really appreciated that. It's quite complex, and how you all plan and work with the community to identify the funds and with the restrictions that are placed on them. Could you share a little bit more of how, you know, there's, I guess, a grander scheme of things when it comes to the, these funds of like matching and different programs and things and funding that we apply for in the city? It was quite eye-opening when you were able to share that with me in the past, if you could?
Yep, I sure could.
Thank you so much.
Our home funds do require a 25% match, and we require developers, when they bring projects forward to us, to, to bring a 25% match for those dollars. And we advertise home funds in a RFQP. We're actually getting ready to publish that RFQP. It should be published by the end of this month. And so, nonprofit developers and for-profit developers will be able to respond with projects, and then we'll evaluate those projects. We do utilize some of our CDBG funds as match for our Lead Safe Lansing grant. And so, when we do those Lead Safe Lansing projects, we utilize CDBG housing rehab funds right along with them to do lead remediation in rental properties. But we also can use CDBG funds to do rehabilitation activities in owner-occupied homes. So, that's one example of a match.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? All right. Seeing no further comments. I appreciate you guys being down here. Look forward to your, April 15th. Okay. I appreciate you being here and the public hearing on April 15th. Will you guys, I know you said you're going to have a consultant here for the public hearing. Will you guys be available as well? Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure. So, the resolution before us does establish a public hearing for April 15th. If all goes well, we get our final allocations from HUD. That would set us up for potential adoption on May 6th. So, with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? Seeing no questions, no concerns. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign? All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving down to Resolution C, grant acceptance, Michigan State Housing Development Authority. It's MSHDA, Mishta Housing Development Fund Grant for Transformational Housing. Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So, we first have to, if you recall, we tabled this on February 26th. So, we first have to untable so that we can actually discuss and potentially consider. So, I would move to untable.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions and concerns? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of untabling this resolution, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign? All right. Motion passes. Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So, just very quickly, with regard to this particular grant, this is a $40 million grant. This is one-time money. No city match is required. This was appropriated through the Public Act 1910 of 2023 to the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity for Enhancement Grants intended to be allocated to Mishta, to award and administer special grants to entended grantees. Funds appropriated are be, are to be used to support opportunities for low and moderately low-income housing. With regard to the allocation for Lansing, the program is designed to support transformational housing projects, including, sorry, including the construction of new mixed-use income housing facilities in the downtown area. Funds are supposed to be used to construct transformational housing infrastructure at workforce and market rates across multiple sites in downtown Lansing, and the project will include residential, commercial, and parking inventory. Specifically, the project that has been proposed is the $228 million New Vision Lansing by Paul Gennolozi's family. Funds will be used to construct housing infrastructure at workforce and market rate. 150 units are being contemplated to be marketed toward workforce, which is essentially units that are affordable to folks that make up to 120% AMI. And then 310 units across three different sites in downtown Lansing that are market rate. Project will include residential, commercial, and parking inventory. I think we were told 530 spaces, some 417 being underground or in parking structures, and the rest being surface lot parking. Development will also include, among the 440,000 square feet of development, again, across the three locations, almost 18,000 square feet of retail space and 76,500 square feet of new or existing office space. The three projects, first is Tower on Grand at 215 South Grand Avenue. This is, to many, the most important, and maybe the truly transformational project of the three. It's proposed to be 26 stories, including 292 apartments, over 250,000 square feet. Several amenities are being contemplated, such as a pool, meeting rooms, and the like, rooftop amenities, access to the river. There will be 315 parking spaces and an attached parking structure across the Grand River. There's supposed to be an above-ground, I'm sorry, above-street-level bridge that would connect the two structures. Also, we have being proposed Capital Tower at 201 North Walnut Street. This is northwest of Capital at Walnut in Ottawa. It's undergone some, some changes since originally proposed. As an example, was originally proposed at 10 floors. Now, it's being proposed at 6, 110,000-square-foot building with 80 residential doors. Units range from studio, one- and two-bedroom units, and then part of the new proposal is, I believe it's eight three-bedroom townhomes. Project will also include 36,480 square feet of office space, two tenants interested that would occupy that space. An underground parking structure is being proposed that will include enough spaces for 102 vehicles, and then there will be an additional 47 spaces of service parking. And the last project is the Washington Square Apartments at 100 South Washington Square, set to include the renovation of the existing building on site. This would consist of 61 and two-bedroom workforce apartments. There will be an additional 3,800 square feet of retail space at that property, and then at the adjacent building at 108 South Washington Square, what's being contemplated is essentially mixed use, which includes parking as well as retail space. All, in terms of the amenities at all three developments, it's being proposed that those will be available to residents of all three sites. We asked about construction, economic impact. Gennolozi family, first of all, believes that they can begin with all three projects no later than the fall of 2024, and that parts of the development will take about two years to compete, complete, sorry. As referenced earlier by a few of our speakers, PLA is being reviewed by local labor groups now. Signatures are expected in the near future. In total, some 500 to 700 construction, construction jobs are anticipated with about $60 million in wages being paid. That's it?
Do we have any questions or concerns on this? Any, any comments from council? Seeing no comments. Ryan, I'm sorry. Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. The comment that I want to share is, as we move forward, obviously, with other developments throughout our city, I certainly hope that a project labor agreement between labor unions and the private developer are completed before it gets to this stage where City Council is voting on it, and we don't, there's no document signed between the two parties. We can't legally force or put that into writing. But I certainly would like to see that arrangement be the standard on projects here in Lansing. We're a union town.
Thank you, Councilman Cost. I guess I would like to state by saying, I am supportive of this project. I'm supportive, and I, first, I want to say thank you to the two appropriation chairs from the Senate. We have Sarah Anthony, and with the House, we have Angela Whitwer. If it wasn't for them sending the money to our city, lots of times, we see it going to Detroit, Grand Rapids, even Flint. More, more money than we've seen come to Lansing in the past. So, I'm happy for that. I'm thankful that the building trades are here. I'm confident in their negotiations that the project labor agreement will be signed. My understanding, it's with the NAB2, the North American Building Trades Unions, and the leadership there signing it. So, I'm, I'm excited about it. I think it's going to be transformational for downtown Lansing. Not only that, it's going to put our local workers to work. It's going to boost the economic development in our downtown by having local workers spending money in the shops here in downtown. So, with that, we have Vice President Hussein.
Yeah. So, one of the things, as, as we've worked to vet this, I don't think there's anybody that we've talked to that is not excited by the promise of this potential project. In terms of the temporary jobs, in terms of the full-time jobs, in terms of the moving of hundreds of individuals downtown, the economic impact, obviously, that they can have downtown. Frankly, you know, everything to, just the change in the skyline. I mean, folks are excited about this. But make no mistake about it, although this is being proposed as one project, this is three respective projects. And I think together, it's transformational. But the only respective project that is transformational is the tower, in my opinion. So, the 26 floors of, of housing, of, of commercial, or resident, I'm sorry, commercial real estate. So, I guess my question, and I asked this question before, and I also talked to Jim, and Jim said that he might be ready to speak to this in terms of some agreements that either might be in place or could be put in place. What assurances, my understanding is the $40 million goes out the door on a reimbursement basis. So, what assurances do we have that these three projects, and Mr. Spatter, for actually asked the question at our last meeting, that these are actually built? What I don't want to see happen is for us to approve this, and then Mr. Gennolozi and his team get, get to work on, on the South Washington Square project, potentially on the Ottawa project, and then, oops, we ran out, we ran out of capital. And so, we still have to reimburse $40 million, even though we don't get the three projects. So, is there some agreement that's legally binding, that's being contemplated, to say, okay, look, we're, you know, it's going to be 20 million for the first project in terms of reimbursement, 10 million for the second, 10 million for the third, a hybrid split? And should that not happen, then we keep in our coffers a certain amount of that money, and then we go out for an RFP for that, the rest of that money. Does that make sense? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, but also, I might indicate, this is on a reimbursable basis, so the city has control over those dollars when they get spent.
Yeah.
Have you, have you anything else to add on that?
Well, and that's what I stated, but I guess the control aspect has to be through written agreements. So, what I'm asking, I know, I know I'm clear as mud right now, but is, so in terms of the agreements that are being considered, right? Will that contemplate segregating these dollars out and reimbursing them upon respective project completion?
As a result of our meeting this afternoon with council leadership, I've talked to the deputy city attorney about incorporating where we can the concepts that you were asking about, just what you stated just now. Putting it in writing.
So, you're saying that it can be done and that it will be done?
We need to look at the agreements to see where that would fit, if it can fit. But yes, we're going to focus on that.
You have anything? Yeah, and I think one more thing for, for Mr. Gennolozi. We were in contact, so folks know. I asked about the NDA. They talked about leaning on a policy from the MEDC. We did have some email exchange. Last email was March 1st. I didn't see in that email a policy. What I saw was a template NDA that may have, within the recitals of that particular template, may have referenced a policy that might exist, but I didn't necessarily see that policy. However, with that said, Mr. Gennolozi, you did, and I have the language here. You said that you had permission from MEDC to give us their statement of acceptance of the designation of approval for the TBP district. Is that correct? Could you, do you mind coming in the well just for a hot second? Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I have that language, language right. So, you have permission from the MEDC to give us their statement of acceptance of the designation of approval for your TBP district? What, what, I think that stemmed from a question of what assurances do we have from the MEDC? Did you have anything in writing, as an example, that your eventual Transformational Brownfield Plan, that it would be a goal?
Will you make sure your lights on, please?
Yeah, there we go. Sorry. Two points. The, your LEDC is part of all of our conversations with Mishta. So, Mishta has told us directly that our transformational, so we make an application, and they have told us that our transformational designation is approved by them. So, that's number one. Your number two point is really a little redundant, because the distribution of the $40 million was in documents with the LEDC and with the MEDC two months ago. So, the distribution applies $20 million to the Tower on Grand and the other $20 million to the other projects. Is that good for you?
And I wasn't aware of that, and it sounds like some folks within our administration in the city attorney's office might not have been aware of it either. So, here's, here's the reality. I just want to make sure that that's actually how this is operationalized. Because make no mistake about it, and we've heard a lot, from a lot of people in the, in the audience, to, to mess this up and to put the city in a position where we're essentially giving $40 million back, dollars back to the state would be catastrophic in terms of economic development dollars coming to the city of Lansing in the future. But let me tell you what will also be catastrophic. If we don't get a transformational project, I promise you that. It would be an embarrassment to Senator Anthony. It will be an embarrassment to Angela Whitwer, right, our appropriations chair in the House. It'll be an embarrassment to this administration. It will be an embarrassment to the Gennolozi family, to the Chamber of Commerce, to all of our labor groups, to this city council. That, I would argue, would be just as catastrophic. If that tower doesn't get built, and I know that there are some internal concerns about that particular tower not getting built, that will absolutely be catastrophic in terms of our ask to the state in the future for appropriations for economic development. So, I just want to be sure, and this isn't for you. So, I just want to be sure that when folks vote this up, that we are all in agreement, right? That now, on the back end of this thing, we have to make sure we do everything we possibly can to ensure that that happens. What happens, let me ask you this, without a Transformational Brownfield Plan, it's not approved. What does that mean for New Vision Lansing?
It means we change the debt structure, but we've been told that it will be approved. If you had signed the NDA, we would have given you all the pro formas, and it shows the distribution of those monies. The LEDC has a distribution document from us that shows the distribution of those monies months ago. So, this is, this whole thing started about the tower. We've invested $5.5 million in land and property for the tower. We've invested another $5.5, $6 million in commitments, contracts, for the construction of the tower. So, when, in the mid-'80s, when we built One Michigan Avenue, we never worried about getting it done. When we did the Victor Building in the Grand Tower, the 300,000-square-foot building next to the Tower on Grand, nobody ever questioned whether we're going to get it done. We've never not delivered on a project. So, the allocation of the 40 million from the state didn't require- So the allocation of the 40 million from the state didn't require us to stipulate, but we agreed to do that.
Yeah, and I remember talking to you about that, and I actually, I think my exact comment to you, we talked about that, and we talked about a few other issues-
Yeah.
-that I won't necessarily disclose here, but one of the things I told you about is I said that's because they didn't do their job, right? And so it was our responsibility, once it got to this, hold on, once it got to this level, for us to actually do our job. And I do think, I do think this body's done their job. I do think the administration of the city attorney's office is committed to doing their job. I think our Economic Development Corporation's done their job. I've talked to every person referenced earlier in terms of, you know, folks being in support of this, folks that were involved in the negotiations at the state level. They are all optimistic. I just, again, and I'm positioning myself to support as well, because I have gotten some of the answers, but it, it will be catastrophic if this thing doesn't, we're not able to pull this across the line, and I truly believe that.
It would be pretty catastrophic for us, too. We will have lost millions of dollars, but there's no reason, I'm not sure where your professional pessimism comes for this project, because the project works. It absolutely works, and we've structured it in a way that it works. So we have no problem. I spoke to Councilman Brown earlier and said, the distribution of funds is already in the LEDC document that we provided, so it can be in the development agreement.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you for being down here. I think we do have a question from-
Thank you, President Garza. Thank you all for being here. I also do my due diligence on all the projects and was able to speak with the Jenna Lozey family, as well as the Boji Group and Mr. Boji. And, you know, going to different groups, as well as the state departments, and I don't know if we could have Carl come back up here, but we have to rely on our LEDC to do their due diligence. If Carl could come here and speak on behalf, if, in fact, all of the information that was provided to us is, is fact-checked, I mean, that's what we have to rely on, as well as the administration. And I'm excited being from Lansing to see, and I did also fact-check, you know, all of the other developments that the Jenna Lozey family has done, and where, when you walk down Michigan, Washington Avenue, you see them. And so I have no reason to believe that we wouldn't see another tower next to the Grand Tower that has already been built. But could you speak to, you know, the concerns that Councilman Hussein, Vice President Hussein, for the public, because it is important that we work, you know, at the state level, as well as the city level, that everything is transparent and we have all the information we need to move forward with decisions that impact our community at this level? Thank you.
Yes, so we, the EDC, and our staff, we've been working, as I said at the last time when we met, with the development team, with MEDC, and we have seen the performance for all three projects. We've been working on them, making changes, giving them feedback, vetting those performance, you know, for months, essentially, and MEDC's involved in that process, too. So it's been a very thorough process, and I'm very confident that the performance that the developer put together, which they've shared with us, but, you know, it's confidential information that, you know, we can't share with you without their permission, and he's, he's requiring an NDA, but I could tell you, having seen the information and having worked with the developer team and the MEDC to actually arrive at those numbers, that I'm confident that these projects work and that all three projects will be done. It's in the developer's best interest to do that, too. Now, we're coming back with the transformational brownfield plan, which is another thing that needs to be approved. Without approving that plan, you know, it would be very difficult to do all three projects, but MEDC's on board with it, because they're involved in the transformational brownfield plan process right up front, not like a normal brownfield where it kind of goes through us as staff, it goes through our board, goes to council, then goes to MEDC. Because so much state money's involved, and it's, the numbers are so big, that they're involved right from the very beginning. And so we meet with them every two weeks. So there's been just numerous meetings, and we've worked on the numbers, and in my experience working with developers, the development team is very competent, and I believe that the numbers we have right now are as accurate as you can get, and they show that the projects will be successful.
Thank you so much. My last follow-up question is, they talked about putting up nearly personal guarantee of 180 million. Is that a fact as far as the guarantee of the funds? Because that's been a concern, that's been articulated up here, so are the funds being guaranteed?
I haven't seen that guarantee, that something between the development team and their, their lender, their, their money sources, so they would have to answer that question.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a question from our, from Councilman Jackson and Cost.
It's not so much a question, just a comment, since, you know, this is a big project, all these are big projects, it's such a, all the money involved, all the things that our legislators did, all the vetting that everyone's done, all the time the developers put in, and all of the, I don't know, support that the, the other groups put in, and to Mr. Lynn's comment about the people coming through, the heavy hitters, trying to persuade our vote, I want to say for the record that nobody that's endorsed this project, with maybe the exception of the school superintendent, just because Lansing schools, that's where my kids go, and I have their interests, just like he does, but as far as the, the unions being involved, they have their interests, and I just want to say, it's just kind of, it's like really close, because we're talking about having a, an agreement, a labor agreement done, or like contemplated before we even vote for one. And two, no offense to anybody, it's going to be hard for, for everybody not to take offense to this, but, you know, they endorse people, they put all these money in the campaigns, you know, they're going to probably benefit directly from the project, so it's just, it just could seem like a conflict, but I know, you know, we all love our unions because of all the, the work. It's just, that didn't influence me, for one. And the, the chamber, I appreciate them, they have their interests, and they do great business in the city as well, but, you know, I, I couldn't even meet with them before. It doesn't influence my opinion, my vote at all. And the same, they put money into everybody's campaign and all that, which we vote on these projects that just benefit everybody. So that didn't influence me. The developers, they did a great job reaching out and being able to answer all questions. I appreciate you all. And that's why I'm supporting the, the projects, because they seem like projects we need. We all hear that we need housing in Lansing, and there's all these different projects that come with housing, and we vet them so thoroughly, but at the end of the day, we need housing, and since we don't have the state of Michigan down here as much, our downtown is suffering because of it. So if we're able to bring people to live there, it will help all the businesses and all the things. So I looked at that, I also looked at that, it is kind of match-free money, whereas we have a, we're not really, the city's not really on the hook as much, and I understand we need to be transformational. So I, like everybody else from Lansing, want to see the skyline change, and I want to see housing, and these projects seem like they make sense, so I'll be supporting them for those reasons. And again, no offense to anybody, everybody has great intentions and do their own separate great work for the city, but that didn't influence my vote. The projects did. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. Carl, or maybe Paul could explain this. Paul, you said that the, if you didn't get the transformational brownfield, that you would have to change debt service, but all three buildings would happen, and then you just said that it would be very difficult to get all three buildings done. So which one is it? Because I'm very confused.
Well, the transformational brownfield, there's two approvals, right? There's, there's three, actually. There's our brownfield board, this council, and then this state of Michigan, which is MEDC Strategic Fund.
Carl, could you pull your microphone up a little bit?
Can you hear me better now? So the transformational brownfield plan is, is key to being able to reimburse the developer, because there's a lot of redevelopment and brownfield eligible costs associated with these projects, a lot. And, and, but it also produces a lot of property taxes, too. And so the brownfield plan captures those new taxes that are being paid by the developer on the new development, and uses those to reimburse the developer for those additional brownfield costs, those above and beyond what a green field site would be, and it makes the numbers work. So it's critical that we have that. Now, if we didn't have that, then he wouldn't be reimbursed for any of those, so he'd have to, he'd have to borrow a, a lot more money and come up with a lot of revenue to be able to pay, make those payments, because the brownfield plan, as it is, it provides revenue to the project on an annual basis for 20 to 30 years, and that goes into the pro forma. Without that revenue stream going back in, instead of, he's just paying his taxes, it's going to make it a whole lot harder for that, that project, all three projects, to pencil out. So in order to do that, he's going to have to, you know, do some type of financing, charge higher rents, do something to be able to cover for that revenue. So that's the challenge. I think it makes it very difficult to do those projects, and the reason we do these brownfield plans is to make projects that are really tough to do on tough sites in Lansing, make them work economically, make the pro forma work, and we need to be able to show that also to MEDC, because they're allowing us to capture additional state taxes above and beyond, so it all fits together. So what I guess, what I'm saying is, without, without the transformational brownfield plan being approved, I think it would be very difficult to do those projects. Could Paul do it? He probably, I don't know, he, he might be able to work his magic and do that, but I think it'd be very difficult.
Can I speak?
Did you get your answer?
Sure.
I think, Paul, you're going to speak on this.
You mean about-
How you can do all three without-
Okay. The Washington Square Building, the rehabilitation of the 100-year-old building that was occupied by the state for nearly 100 years, that building is using very little of the transformational brownfield. It's using the conventional brownfield because of the proportion of renovation that it goes through. But that building is using missing middle funding from Mishta. The original concept was to use less transformational brownfield, subject to Mishta's ability. When, now, and a little bit of background, those of you who don't know, I was five and a half years on the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's Michigan Strategic Fund Board. The three large transformational brownfields that got passed, specifically first, the Dan Gilbert Brownfield, my committee headed all of the research and development on transformational brownfield, and we worked for months on the details of how to make that work. So I guess I feel pretty confident that I understand transformational brownfields. I understand what it takes for the Michigan Strategic Fund to approve them. So our application wasn't a folly. This is perfect for a transformational brownfield for a municipality of less than 75,000, or I'm sorry, of $75 million. Previous to Senator Singh's law change, which I worked with Senator Singh on the law change, Lansing would not have qualified for a transformational brownfield, because the population was too small and the projects were too small. When the Gilbert project came at well over $1 billion, it, the law was really written specifically for him. Then Senator Singh came back and amended the law to allow communities all over the state. We've just recently seen a transformational approved for Grand Rapids, based on $100 million of work. That's the population requirement for Grand Rapids. So when we started our projects, it was first the Tower on Grand and the related building, the atrium. That was, we, we bought that land from the Johns family a year and a half ago, and the Tower on Grand was the first project, the Washington Square Building was the second project, and the Capitol Tower Building was the third project. So our initiative was always the Tower on Grand. We applied for missing middle for the Tower on Grand, and they ran out of money. There was such a rush in to do missing middle, they ran out of money. So there is an additional $200 million that has been passed by the Senate and is sitting in the House Committee waiting to be voted on, but the, the House right now is at a little bit of an impasse between the Republicans and the Democrats. So the missing middle portion of the Tower on Grand isn't available today. If it is available, we'll take less brownfield. Now, we have openly and aggressively dealt with the LEDC about only using the brownfield transformational and Tifa that was necessary to make the project feasible. The other way to make it theoretically feasible is to raise the rents. If we raised the rents to 50% of what they are in a new identical building in Detroit, it would mean that the people in the city of Lansing would have to pay 25 or 30% more than they're paying now. So our project, every unit in our project, is at the current market rate. What we didn't want to do was come into town, build a fancy big building, and then make everybody pay more rent than we should or could in our market. So we've taken a very conservative approach that has impressed our lender enough to agree to loan us the conventional dollars required. So we've talked at length with the LEDC. It's their job to negotiate how to take less brownfield. A developer in the city of Lansing has never done that. A developer in the city of Lansing has never said, when we meet our debt service coverage ratio for the project, we'll figure out how to give that money back to you. And I think Carl can, Carl and the city attorney can talk. We've discussed that and offered it extensively at every opportunity. So this project works fine, we're going to get transformational brownfield, and if we get missing middle monies, the transformational brownfield and the city's Tifa brownfield will be reduced by that amount. So have I answered your question?
Thanks.
Okay. And, and I got no issue at all stipulating in our development agreement, just on the same schedule we gave Carl months ago, we'll allocate 20 million to the Tower on Grand, and we'll allocate 20 million to the other, the other three projects, because the 108 parking ramp is technically different by legal description than the Washington Square and the Capitol Tower.
Okay, thank you, Paul. I appreciate you making yourself available to be down here.
Sure.
You guys gave us a full presentation. I feel like we're kind of going over that again, so I'm going to try to stop you here. Is there any other questions or comments from council? I think we're in a good spot now, so do we have a motion? Vice President Hussein. So moved. Okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on down. Resolution D, grant acceptance, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, transformational municipal infrastructure for new city campus. Do we have a motion to untable that?
Sure, I would move to untable so that we could discuss and consider.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns? All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. Vice President Hussein.
Sure, so just very quickly, again, this is a $40 million grant, one-time money, no city match required. This was appropriated funding to the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity for transformational municipal infrastructure. Grant is specifically to support the city of Lansing's development of a new city campus in the downtown corridor, including a municipal administration building, facilities and adjacent infrastructure, i.e. city hall. Eligible costs include property acquisition, planning, design, and engineering costs, construction of a new city administration building owned by the city of Lansing, and/or adjacent infrastructure improvements, including facades, fixtures, equipment, green space, streetscapes, utilities, or lighting. So specifically, the project being proposed by the Boji Group is a move of city hall from its current location to 217 South Capitol Avenue, which would be a to-be renovated Masonic temple. The idea would include now a $3.65 million purchase of the property. That number comes from a city commission appraisal. I believe that was executed last October. That does, and we'll, we'll talk about that with item F, but no longer includes the $1 million in carrying costs, or $350,000 in a permanent visibility easement. By moving city hall, we will make room for a potential sale of the current city hall and development, potentially of a new downtown hotel. Once purchased, once purchased, sorry, the project at 217 South Capitol is expected to take up to 18 months to complete. Employees can then move out- Employees can then move out of city hall and will occupy the first four, four floors of the development being explored now, and as referenced by Mr. Shaldiner earlier, is a relationship lease agreement with LSD so they could, so that they can occupy the top three floors. With that being said, I would move the resolution for acceptance.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none, all. Ryan Kost.
Thank you, President Garza. This is for the city attorney. On these, on D and E here with the grant acceptance and then the, the purchase agreement, are those six vote items or five vote items?
Committee of the whole. I'm sorry. Committee of the whole, they're five vote items, and when you get to the council agenda on the budget amendments, it's six vote items.
Both of them are six vote in council?
No, they're, say, the property, purchase of property is five votes.
My concern is with, with this grant acceptance, if we take this, this grant and we decide to turn down the offer that's on the table currently, that there is going to be a way that somehow ends up happening, even if it isn't the will of this body, a creative out with this money. Because once we, we allocate that money, we are hands tied, can't do anything more with it, you know, and I have concerns that we could end up finding a loophole in here. Because I'll be honest, I'm not in love with this plan that we're, is in front of us. So I guess that's more of a statement than it is a question.
All right, thank you. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Garza. I too share the sentiments of the process. I've spoken with Mr. Boji and his team. They've been wonderful in taking me through the process, similar to how the housing transformational project was provided in the Genozi, you know, kind of step by step, and they've done a lot of work to move, you know, this initiative forward. Looking at the documentation that was provided from the administration, Mayor, you're, well, actually, you emailed us, and looking at the process of the bids and the scoring, I feel we need to be more transparent and more clear on that process for our constituents, our community, as well as for me as a council person. That was very deterring. Looking at where the process started, I know that we've been blessed to, by the people, to have, you know, the public service building in the middle of that bid process come and approve 170-plus million to kind of divide city hall as a campus with the courts firing the lockup. And so for me, this is a major win for our community and the efforts that have went forward to get a state appropriation from Senator Anthony as well as Representative Whitwer. This is amazing opportunity for us to have a new home for the citizens of Lansing, to get the service they need for this next generation. And so for me, while this is a great thing, I'm very disappointed at the process and the opportunities that we've had to have more transparency, to get to this place, to feel more comfortable. But of course, we need a city hall. Of course, we're very privileged to have people advocating and lobbying and also providing funding for a city hall that would not be possible without that. And so I think that's my sentiment or statement that I would like to make in all of this as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Brown. Do we have any? Councilwoman Pelavonaglou.
Thank you. And this is more of a statement than a question. I guess, you know, as a newer council member coming in, in January, and receiving all of this information to pour over, I will say that I am glad we had additional time to ask questions to the administration. We've had the opportunity to speak with developers, and, and we've had time to really ask questions and have our questions answered, review the documents. I think two weeks ago, I was in a different space where I really wasn't sure if this, if I was comfortable with this or not, because this is such a large amount of money to make sure that we're doing our duty, spending this the right way on behalf of the public. And when I look at the city hall deal, it feels a little different than a housing development because we need housing so badly. City hall is a little different. No one asks, no one's asking for a new city hall out in the public, but it is important. Our employees need to come to a building where they feel safe and comfortable, and the heat works, and the roof isn't caving in, and all of those things. It is very important. So I will say that I, I do support the project. I'm grateful that we had more time ample, you know, more time than we did previously to, again, ask questions and have those questions answered.
All right, thank you. Do we have any further comments, questions, statements? Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, I just want to thank real quickly Rob Boji's team, because we, yeah, I will say that they were incredibly accessible during this entire process. I think they overshared. I think they were, you know, when they, when they onboarded concerns, they took it back to their internal team. They, they considered, I think in earnest, came back and, and had amended some things. As an example, from the outset, I was incredibly concerned about the $1 million in carrying costs. I don't, I don't think anybody, you know, I don't think it was palatable to anybody that we pay them for lost, you know, utilities and, and maintenance dollars and potential revenues because they just anticipated or assumed that this council would approve some deal down the line. Also, the $350,000 visibility easement, you know, I told them, you know, I was, I was just frank. I said I couldn't care less if politicians, office managers, administrative assistants have windows or not, and I, and I really don't care if we do cut the windows in, and at some point, folks are staring at a building next door, oh, well. If we have the opportunity to build and build critical mass, whether that be through residential, commercial, or the like, any city worth their salt is going to say, let's build, you know, in that area. So to, to hold that open in perpetuity, particularly at the rate of $350,000, didn't make a lot of sense to me. And so they did take those concerns back to their internal team, and they did drop those costs in the, in the purchase agreement, which I appreciate. This was the, the potential of moving city hall. And to be clear, too, I've, I've spoken at length with our legislators that were involved in negotiations with this. Probably even more so than with Genozi's team, it was very clear that they contemplated this money going to, to Mr. Boji, that he was actually in there negotiating for these dollars, and that they believed that this would, would be a transformational project. I mean, that was crystal clear. And I think it, it's less about the city hall, frankly, and it's more about the unlocking of the potential of this particular site. And so we're going to see how, how good our administrative team is, our city attorney's office, our LEDC, as we move forward, because should this be, should all of this be approved, and should we actually move out of this site, we expect that this, this site really capitalizes on the promise of the site. As a matter of fact, I think we had Ms. Stanaway earlier saying that this is potentially the primus piece of real estate in the city, and I don't disagree. So again, there is a motion on the table. Just wanted to make quick comments. We'll be supporting, and that's why.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Carter.
Thank you, President Garza. I also would like to thank the Boji Group administration for being open to the several questions that I had. I did have concern with the $1 million carrying costs as well, but I also had concern regarding the extra layers that would be potentially white boxed. But due to further conversation, that was explained thoroughly, so I appreciate that. I would say that this was a development that I wasn't 100% sure, but again, thank you for opening the doors and answering your phone call, or the phone calls with the many questions that I had regarding what was brought to me as our citizens came to us and just really wanted to ask a deeper question. So I thank you for your time. I'm looking forward to seeing what happens to our existing building. I think that is a question that many of our residents have, but I'm looking forward to seeing what this would look like moving forward, considering the conditions of this current building. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carter. Do we have any further questions, comments, statements? Councilman Kost.
Thank you, President Garza. So I didn't clarify on this Masonic temple, my, my rationale behind it. You know, we are looking at this, we're sitting in a building we own, and I heard public comment, and I actually had written down before that public comment, that everything that the superintendent listed off could be done in this building as well. I do not think the numbers that we received on the reconstruction of this building were accurate. We are going to be overpaying $40 million, so the sale of this building is also going to go into that building for a building we're going to half-use. I can't justify that as good use of taxpayer money. It doesn't make sense. There were also proposal on the disk that we received for much less, and it would take down a blighted property down here and build a brand-new city hall to our needs. It was significantly less, in fact. This proposal was not the proposal that was in the 2022 RFP for city hall proposals. There was a totally different building. You know, I understand, and Councilmember Hussein pointed out that the Boji Group, all due respect, has worked very hard with the state legislature to get this money. But as Councilman Jackson pointed out, people are sometimes adherent to where the money flows, and in looking at this, there's a lot of money flowing from the Boji Group to the state. And I can't compromise my own ethics to vote for something that was paid for with donations to the political machines next door. I think that's wrong. I think this should have been a proper process. I'm going to be very firm in my opposition to the Masonic Temple project. Absolutely, we need city hall to be renovated or a different location, but this is not the deal. This feels forced on me. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kost. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Garza. With Councilman Kost's sentiments, I know that it's been back and forth for both of these appropriations, if we were able to accept the money and then, you know, look at bids or whatever it may be. Could we have legal speak to that?
Sure. Jim, would you like to speak on that? You want to repeat your question, Councilman Brown?
Yes, President Garza. The question is, I know we have been back and forth as a body, if it was possible to accept the appropriations of the, the, the $240 million, which would total 80 million, and potentially for our project, which would be city hall, is have the opportunity to bid, bid out a, you know, city hall options. Could you speak to that? Because I know it was something that was brought forward, but there was an opinion from your office. Were you able, are you able to speak to that, please?
Well, the sole source procurement, this was bid out, too, wasn't it, at one point, Greg? It was bid out, and we, we watched this process all the way through to make sure that we were complying with the ordinances and the law, and we were. And, you know, I don't know where the thought is that they were not being followed.
Okay, you're my, so I, I think he's just simply asking, can we, can we actually vote on this? Could he, as an example, as a respective council member, support this resolution? And then moving forward with F, with the actual purchase agreement, because we have these, these additional bites at the apple, actually not support those because he wanted to see a process that would be executed by the administration to, you almost go back to the drawing board and make sure that these dollars are best used.
Two separate items. We've signed off on the resolution.
That's not what I was saying.
No, I understand.
Yes, yes, no, that's not what I was saying. What I was saying is, this body has went back and forth with the resolutions of the $40 million.
Right.
Are we able to accept the money and then appropriate it later?
No. No, we've already issued an opinion on that.
Yes, so.
That opinion goes back.
Yes, could you speak up? It's a little hard for me to hear you.
That opinion goes back to 1997.
He wants you to speak up.
That opinion goes back to 1997. When the mayor, the mayor proposes, and you either accept or reject. That's the standard rule the city has followed for 30 years, and that is consistent with the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act and the case law.
So with this, our only option is to vote up or down?
Reject, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Brown. That's why we tabled those, those last resolutions, because we thought we were able to put the money into a controlled count, and then that's when the 1996 opinion came from our city attorney back in February.
And, and I apologize for misinterpreting, because, you know, I was going back to Councilman Spatterford's comment from the last committee of the whole, when we actually tabled this, where he was less inclined to table this particular resolution, because we did have additional bites at the apple. So that's why I thought you were asking.
So you're saying we do or don't?
We don't.
We, we don't with the actual accept, acceptance and appropriation. However, because you would have to, as an example, to move out of this building, you would have to, you know, you would have to approve a purchase agreement, and then to sell this building, you would have to approve sale of this building down the line. So there's, there's more council interfacing with that than there would be with what we just approved. That makes sense.
Councilman Spatterford, did you have a question? Councilman Kost.
Just real quick, President Garza, and to your point, Councilman Brown, that's the reason why I asked when we get to council, how many vote items they are, because it's a simple majority for the purchase agreement and the sale of this building versus the actual acceptance of that grant, which is a six-vote item. So that makes a big difference if you're looking at the vote breakdown.
So I think what Councilman Kost said is, for the sale and purchase of the new city hall, it's a simple majority, five vote, but to accept these resolutions, to pass these resolutions, it's a, it's a supermajority of six votes.
That's at the council level.
At the council level, correct.
So with that being said, if we, we vote Resolution D and accept, and you're saying if the purchase agreement is, what happens if that does not get the five votes then?
Do you want to explain that, Jim? Mayor Shor, do you want to explain?
So the answer is, as I understand it, is that the, the budget amendment allows the budget to be amended with the $40 million. It's a five-vote item out of committee of the whole to council, but then it's a six-vote item like any other budget amendment. If you pass that with six votes, you have now amended the budget to add $40 million to the budget. If I want to spend that money on moving us to the temple building, I can't do that if we don't own it. So you have a five-vote item on purchasing that building. I can't, I can't move into a building, or I can't spend money on a building we don't own, and I'm not going to. So I can't, without a purchase, I can spend the $40 million on something else. I could spend it on this building. I could spend it on another building. I could spend it on something else, but I can't spend it on something I don't own. So the second piece of the, the puzzle is the money is appropriated, but the administration can't spend it on a building that we don't own.
Thank you for that explanation, Mayor. So if the, the support was not there for the purchase of the building, what would be your next step?
I will find out. I mean, I, we'd have to figure out if the support wasn't there, how we would move forward. We'd make that decision. I'm not going to create a process, a process on something until I know if it passes or not.
Jim, what would be our, the process here at the city if that, if that was taking place? What would have to happen next?
Well, there would have to be a proposal, you know, to, if it's qualified already as a budget amendment, the mayor, and under the resolution, the mayor has the discretion to spend the money under the authority because it's a budget amendment. Purchasing a building, selling a building, has to come back to city council, and it's just a matter of how many votes. It's either five or six, depending on what it is. Does that answer that? I'm not sure of answering your question.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, so we are moving on to seven o'clock, people. So people that are just arriving here to council, we are still in committee of the whole, we still have two resolutions yet that we have not moved forward with, so give us some time. We'll probably take a five-minute intermission between the two, and then we'll move to our council meeting. All right, so do we have any further questions on Resolution D? Questions, statements, comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion? Vice President Hussein. Okay, we have a proper motion. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion passes seven one. All right, moving down, Resolution Act 1, 2024 Purchase Agreement Masonic Temple, 217 South Capitol. Do we have a motion to untable?
Yeah, so folks might remember, actually, all the way back on February 12th, we moved to table this. So I am going to motion to untable, so that we can discuss and consider.
Okay, we have a motion to untable. Any questions or concerns? All right, all those in favor on untabling this resolution, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. Jim Schmerko, do you mind explaining where we got to this new resolution here? We have a new resolution in front of us, you guys. You mentioned you were going to have Greg explain it.
Yeah, sure. Greg, can I explain it to you?
Greg, do you mind coming up and explaining this for us, please?
It's going to be both boring and short, so you're welcome in advance. So my understanding is that discussions were had, and the removal, the original resolution as proposed, referenced acquisition of the temple building for, I think, $3.65 million, and then as well a $1.35 million payment that would go towards carrying costs and acquisition of a visibility easement that would look northward towards the Capitol Building and campus. That secondary piece was removed, so a new purchase agreement was placed and filed with the clerk last Friday that is functionally identical, except it takes out all reference to an acquisition of any visibility easement. And then the, a resolution was prepared if council wanted to advance forward for vote that new purchase agreement, a resolution had to be prepared, or an amendment to the resolution that was previously introduced and tabled on the 12th, that takes out reference to both spending the additional money and acquiring the additional easement. And so the new amendment just, or the new resolution just has those pieces removed. If anybody has any.
Thank you for the explanation, Greg. I think, did everybody understand that? So basically, the old resolution, we had the visibility easement, $250,000 that were striked out of it, as well as the carrying cost of $1 million.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Do we have any questions or concerns with this new resolution? Councilman Brown.
Thank you. Just wanted to say to leadership, thank you guys for the work that you've put in on, on this, because there were several constituents who were concerned about it, as well as thank you for the concessions to the Boji Group as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge the work that you all put in on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Do we have any other further questions or concerns? Okay, do we have a motion for this new resolution? We have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
All right, motion passes seven one. Okay, and with that, see no other, we are adjourned at 7:04 PM. We will be back at 7:10.